Good evening and welcome to the March 21st Board of Directors Meeting. Before we do the pledge, we need to have a change to our agenda. We need to have a motion to postpone our executive session. Do I have a motion? All in favor? And how we postpone? And also, we would like to extend the first public input session to thirty minutes, and we will need a motion to that as well. Okay, let's start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Which we stand.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, on our nation, on our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Dr. Phil, please take a moment by our right chair. The first public input session is a twenty-one-minute session, which will make you thirty, but we're not. With each person having no longer than three minutes in which to make a statement. But a second public input session may be held at the end of the meeting, if allowed by the board chair. Each speaker will give his or her name, address, and reasonable speaking. Public input is designated for district residents, but the board chair may grant non-residents the opportunity to address the board. Statements concerning the subject matter that fall within the law regarding the executive sessions, for example matters of public personnel, cannot be made during public input. We, as a community, pledge to treat each other as we wish to be treated. We pledge to seek understanding when there may be disagreement. Regardless of outcomes or opinions, we pledge to move forwards with respect. This is time for comments and your questions for the board, but please be aware that some questions may not be able to be answered at this meeting. Before we begin our public input, I would ask, since we have a lot of people here and it's great to see you all, it looks like we may have a lot of public inputs, so we're asking that if someone speaks and shares something that you were also going to say, if you would not repeat that and give someone else a chance to give their input as well. First public input.
Is it here? Is this this? Okay. My name is Sophie Larson. I'm from North Berwick. Madam Chairwoman, Honored Board, thank you for hearing my input. I will address three topics: firstly, the hiring practices of MSAT 60; secondly, the arts and humanities; and finally, logic. Hiring practices first. Today's the 21st of March, Women's History Month, and the year is 2024. I emphasize that because twice you have discussed whether this district should hire one sex above the other rather than the best person for the job. That attitude is not just outdated and illegal, but ill-fitting and unbecoming for your stations as directors of a public institution. This is the 21st century. Half of my students are women, and they cannot be served by the attitude that they don't deserve a fair shot at a career simply because of their gender. Women are in the workforce, and we are here to stay. Arts and humanities. The story of Troy begins like this: seen to me news of the rage of Achilles. Our oldest stories were music. Imagine ancient Rome, but without sculpture or architecture. What's the museum of fine art without paintings? What are the Olympics without athletes? What's your commute or your workout routine if you don't have your favorite radio station or your music? In other words, the arts sustain us and add great joy to our lives. They also give us careers as painters, musicians, furniture makers, website designers, and more. If you cut arts and phys ed, you stand our students' opportunities to participate in the rich world that ties humanity together, knowing themselves deeply and participating in the history of art. So I urge you to not cut among the specialists who develop the nascent skills of our youngest artists and athletes. Lastly, logic. A common mistake, pardon me, is the false dichotomy: if A is not the answer, then it has to be B. The problem is there's sometimes a third answer, and that's C. This is a tough budget season, and it's tempting to say if we don't cut the arts, we cut something else. But there's a third option, and that is not to cut anything at all. I beg you, Honored Board, find the courage to ask our citizens to invest in the most valuable things that our towns have, and that's our students, our kids. In the best of worlds, you are batting for them, for the students. Our district only spends about fifteen thousand per student per year. Main state average is around seventeen. Even how little we spend, our students perform a lot better than you might expect, and that's due to amazing educators and administrators that work tirelessly on a skinny budget to improve the chances and lives of our students. Look, everybody knows you can't improve test scores and student outcome if you cut services and increase class size. So I implore you to bravely ask for the funds we need before you decide the kids aren't worth it. Again, you're asking for the students whom you serve first, and they deserve a board that will stand out for them. The worst that can happen is that you have to go back and make some cuts. But please consider this logical truth: if you don't ask, you don't get the funds at all. Thank you.
Well, I wanted to start by just wishing a good evening to the board and also to our district administrative team. I know that you guys have been working really hard, and a lot has been asked of you, this budget season in particular.
Chair?
I will. Absolutely. Let's get to it. My name is John Hall, and I'm a former graduate of Noble High School. I'm a current parent of two children in the district right here, and I have a wife who's also a teacher in the district.
John, where are you from?
From North Berwick, and I'm a selectman in North Berwick as well. And I've been an educational technician and teacher in the district for the last two decades. And I graduated with a lot of people, and I certainly know a lot of people in this room. North Berwick and the greater MSAT 60 school community is and has always been my home, and I hope that it will continue to be. We all have a unique story, and I think it's important to remember that we all have a unique story. And I'll share just a little bit of mine. One side of my family escaped the Russian and Eastern European pogroms at the turn of the century, immigrating to New York City, becoming citizens of this country, working hard and living there for two generations before moving to the African region. The other side of my family, the Halls, my mom is where I get my last name from, they came to this country of five hundred different nations in 1640 to donate money. In 1760, two brothers, William Hall, moved to North Berwick. They bought or acquired, I'm not sure how, three thousand acres, which is now Beatrix area of North Berwick, and we still have one hundred and forty acres in the original farms there. I can go across my town at any point in time and show my children nine generations of Halls that have lived in North Berwick. I can also live in New York City, and I can talk about the persecution of the Jewish side of my family and how they had to leave with nothing except their lives. I've attended a lot of board meetings in the past, and I had not recently, but in the last couple of months, I've felt compelled to attend some school board meetings because of the stuff that I've been hearing set acts of board meetings.
Twenty seconds.
By school board members. Since I only have twenty seconds, I will jump right to three things. One is misogyny, just as we all have a common understanding of language. Misogyny is a Greek word coming, being derived from hatred of women, and it's an aversion or prejudice towards women. I have heard on multiple occasions misogynistic statements by members of this school board. The other one is xenophobia.
John?
I will.
John, this is, sorry.
An aversion or hostility to disdain for or fear of foreigners, peoples from differences, different cultures.
Respect the trait of women who are strangers to the school board.
And I hope that you will respect the second public input time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Heather Pelker, North Berwick resident. I'm a mom of three kids who attend school in this district, the wife of the school resource officer for the high school, the daughter to Sheila Jordan, of whom this stage is named for, and also is the building, working in the building's library for her while attention passed away. I'm a graduate of Noble High School, now an employee of this district. I've lived in North Berwick most of my life. I have worked in education for seventeen years, and the first fifteen years as a high school English teacher. I'm here today to speak about the necessity for mental health professionals, including school social workers and school counselors, and the role they play in our schools. Today's student is not the same student I used to teach seventeen years ago. Today's student comes with trauma, housing instability, separated parents, foster homes, food insecurity, learning disabilities, emotional disturbances, and many other barriers that stand in the way of those students getting an education. My job and the job of all the other school social workers and school counselors in this district is to break down those barriers to help our students gain access to that education. Social workers and counselors provide a safe space for students to get their needs met when there is no other safe spaces for them. Sometimes those needs can be as simple as access to food, which our schools provide for every student. However, sometimes those needs are far more complicated and require more time than what a classroom teacher can offer. If you walk into any classroom in any of our buildings, you will find a myriad of students with different abilities, backgrounds, experiences, home lives, and resiliency levels. We already know that not every student learns the same way, and because of that, there are laws to grant every child in this country access to an equal education. With that in mind, how is a child that can't sleep because of past trauma expected to access that education? How is the teenager who has taken care of younger siblings going to access it? How is the middle school schooler worried about losing their housing going to do it? That is where we step in and allow those kids the opportunities they deserve. You ask what school counselors and social workers do? In one week, a school counselor could meet with over a hundred students between scheduled meetings, unscheduled meetings, and groups. An IEP social worker might attend five hour-and-a-half-to-two-hour-long IEP meetings after doing observations and collecting data on those students all week. We screen for suicide ideation and self-harm at all grade levels and in all buildings because we are the professionals trained to do so. That is today's student. School counselors and school social workers do all of this and more so that our students can be their most successful selves during each school day. We are here for the students and the families, just like you are. I trust that every person in this room is here today because they care about our students, want what is best for them, and will do whatever it takes to make sure they get the best. Let us remember as we move forward.
Hi, my name is Charles Colombo, resident in North Berwick. Now, I spent twelve years teaching culinary arts at Dorp County Community College, and in my time there, I could get an idea of what group of school students came from. And my best students, one of the schools they came from was this one right here, thanks to all of these great teachers behind me. The cuts you're considering here will pull the rug out from under them. Math and literacy coaches are vital. It's one of the biggest obstacles to students going into the schools. Currently now, I work in workforce development end of the community colleges, and I've heard people come up and say, "Kids don't want to work." Kids do want to work. The problem is, for every person, ten people that retire, we only have seven taking their place. The cuts you're talking about are going to impede these kids' abilities to get the jobs we need in this economy, to get the jobs we need to move forward as a state, to get the jobs to pay the taxes, the further support of the school. It's a spiral, a downward spiral you're talking about putting the school on. We have to, as responsible adults, just suck it up and do the right thing and see that our kids are properly educated and keep doing the great job these people are doing. Thank you.
Are you clear? Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm super nervous, but my name is Andrea Tiberio. I live in Lebanon. I have a sixth grader that now attends in the Noble Middle School. When trying to figure out what I wanted to say to you today, somebody just told me, "Tell your story," so I'm going to give you a very bridge version of our story. Our child has been in this district since he was a kindergartner, and I'd like to offer you some insight into how some of the positions that you are considering eliminating from our school have impacted his educational journey. We came into this district in kindergarten with an IEP that he obtained through CPS during preschool. From day one, our child required OT services, support from school social workers, support of ed techs to get through his day. Even with this support, he still struggled profoundly in the mainstream setting. In first grade, he was moved into a self-contained classroom where he needed further support and was almost always one-on-one or one-on-two with an ed tech. I'm sorry, I'm probably getting emotional. He slowly transitioned into the mainstream setting with continued support from an ed tech. Starting with specials with an emphasis on music, this class specifically provided him a place to feel included, share a passion, and connect with his peers through the love of an art, something that he had always struggled with. Over time, we increased his time in the mainstream setting, all while continuing to have support from an ed tech. There's a theme here. Having an ed tech with him provided him a safe person that knew his cues, knew our plan, and could remind him of his strategies and support him throughout his day. Eventually, he developed the skills needed to be successful in the mainstream classroom with minimal support. This was after years of work for all involved. Over the years, we attended countless IEP meetings, which I don't have to tell you are challenging enough to navigate on your own, let alone without someone coordinating these meetings, tracking changes to an IEP. It would be next to impossible to keep it all straight. These meetings are often highly emotional, and without someone in that position, things would be missed. We have had many discussions with principals, some of who are in this room tonight, the director and assistant director of the special ed department and his teachers, to talk about options and what might be the next best step for our child. I am more than proud to say that now he has been discharged from his IEP and is a full-time mainstream student. But I can say without any hesitation that he would not be where he is now if it wasn't for the support of his teachers, the ed techs, the IEP coordinators, the social workers, the principals, the assistant special ed director, and the special ed directors, all of the support staff in the Lebanon schools and now the middle school. I can say without certainty this wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for that support. Cutting any of these positions would be detrimental to any child that needs specialized instructions, services, or extra support to be successful in the school setting and would directly affect a chance of future success stories like ours. I don't know the answer of how to solve the budget problem we're facing, but I do know that removing these positions of frontline staff and the people responsible for meeting child individualized needs are not the right choice. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kate Sheldon. I'm from North Berwick. This is my daughter Kimberly. Kimmy is a junior at the Mary Beard Academy, and I'm a teacher at the Hittary Schools as well. I'm here tonight to hopefully be a voice for what I believe is a silent majority of our community, although it's looking more like a, it is a majority, who want to simultaneously provide the best education for our students while also being visibly responsible. We are sympathetic to the need to balance the budget, yet we love our children and we want what's best for them. For our family and for my daughter Kimmy, several of the program's targeted shortcuts would directly and negatively impact her education and her well-being. Our daughter, as I mentioned, currently is at the Mary Beard School. She needs extra supports that are affected through her IEP and an MHA to be successful. Some of the most important support she needs are frequent check-ins with guidance counselors and social workers. We all want our children to be safe and happy. For some students, this just takes more time and effort. I'm not going to stand up here and tell you everything that my daughter went through prior to her adoption, but I can tell you that if you endured half of what my daughter has in her short life, you would need extra support and care as well. There are many students like my daughter with ACEs, adverse childhood experiences, who are part of the Noble District. It is just as important that we support students with special needs as students in the general population. Having the Mary Beard School in our district makes it possible for our daughter to have an education suited for her needs within the district. This is an advantage to our family by not having to have her travel long distances for the education she needs. It's also an advantage to MSAT 60 that they do not need to pay for an out-of-district placement for students who cannot be successful in the regular classroom. Before Mary Beard, Kimmy was lucky enough to be part of the Noble Flex program. From Kimmy's point of view, she just needed a different environment to learn in. The pressure of a large high school, especially when you're figuring out who you are, was just overwhelming. It wasn't a fit. She loved her teachers, but she could not avoid the peer pressure. This experience at Noble Flex was night and day for Kimmy compared to the high school. The curriculum was exciting, hands-on, student-centered, and engaging. The topics they learned about were timely and relevant, such as learning about what's happening in the Ukraine. They also did passion projects, which allowed Kimmy to bring a structured learning framework to her love of animals. I think the flexibility that virtual learning offers is a huge plus for a variety of learners. I wish this program were available through grade twelve, and I certainly believe it would be a huge loss to our district if we're not funded. Having the option to have such an innovative model program in our town is really fantastic for me as a parent. But I also feel this type of learning is the wave of the future. The learning coaches are taking all of the best ideas and the most relevant technology that we've acquired during the pandemic and reworking it in a learning environment in a student-centered way. Both Mary Beard Academy and Noble Flex have been lifesavers for our family, and I mean that literally, not figuratively. And that comment extends to the talented, caring, hard-working guidance and social work staff of our district as well. As an educator on the front lines, I can tell you that each and every cut that we make to our budget has a ripple effect. We must focus on the students and their well-being, even if it does not mean, even if it does mean that tax payers like me have to dig a bit deeper to fund these important programs. Thank you for taking the time to hear my thoughts, and thank you for all you do for the students of our district.
Hi, I'm Greg Kneer. I'm from Berwick. I have a twelve-year-old son who's a sixth grader in the Flex program. I'm also the father of last year's Noble High School valedictorian. We got into the Flex program from a different angle than I think most people did. My wife works cardio and culinary rehab. She's the director of the program down at Mass. And she works with the most at-risk people. So during the pandemic, we were looking for an alternative. And in fourth grade, my son did a program with Mrs. Campbell that was wonderful, and then we learned about the Flex program. So now he's done it for two years, and it's worked out very well. Not once did we send COVID to my wife's clients, and not once did them having it bring it to the school. So that was a victory in and of itself. But the best thing is, I have a twelve-year-old son who loves school, and that's a miracle. He can't wait to get up and get in line and board him and see his classes. He can't wait to go into school. The woman who just spoke talked about the passion projects. That was a big thing. The myriad of techniques that these teachers use to reach all these kids, they experience things, they talk about things, yes, they read, and yeah, they sit and do math homework and those kinds of things. But they get a lot of variety. I am a little bit afraid that if we take my son and put him in a more streamlined system, in the what we call normal system, or I'm not sure what labels you say, he's going to be bored to tears, and he's not going to be excited about school. I, a few people have brought up, and I just want to reiterate, if you tell me that it's going to cost us all a little bit more to keep Flex, by all means, I'll give you more money. I come from a background, I grew up in Northern Illinois, where we paid approximately four times the tax on homes that weren't nearly as valuable as we have today. And we had no art, and we had no music, and we had no athletics, and we had holes in the roofs of the facilities that people wouldn't vote for a referendum to even fix them. I don't see that here. But I'll give you more money if it means giving more stuff to the kids, absolutely. Especially because I'm selfish. If you want to keep Flex, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ozma Caston, and I am an Excel student in the fifth grade at the Noble School. For me and other students, Excel is not extra. It's my specialized education. And it is stimulated, and my experience with Excel has stimulated my deep love of learning. Last year, Mrs. Haylian retired, and the beginning of this year was very hard. At the beginning of the year, I did not have much Excel time, and as a result, for the first time in my life, I was disinterested in school. I didn't want to come to school, and I was just bored in the classroom, even though my amazing teacher, Mrs. Gollan, tried her best with her limited time to keep me engaged. But then in December, Mrs. Haylian came back for that month, and after Christmas break, we got Mr. Ropper. They are both such great teachers, and I feel lucky to be able to have learned from them both and still learn from Mr. Ropper. The reason that individualized education is so important is because our class sizes have increased each year, and our teachers are just trying to keep up with all our different levels. All students deserve the right to learn in their grade, and if they already know some of what is being taught, it isn't fair for them to just wait around without also learning something. In my fifth-grade class, I have a range of classmates, some of whom do not require special education, while others of us do. One of my classmates can barely speak, while one of my friends has autism and spends part of her time with a special teacher. I believe that schools where everyone's needs are met are an opportunity to learn from each other. Please support all the teachers and programs that have helped so many of us. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elliot Arsenal, and this is my husband Murray and Arsenal. We're from Lebanon. Our daughter has been a participant of the Flex program since its implementation, and we wanted to express our concern about the possibility that they may be losing their funding. My husband and I decided to enroll Bryn in Flex initially for multiple reasons: interruptions in traditional in-person classes due to the pandemic, severe respiratory condition that has required multiple hospitalizations, and for personal reasons. It was a difficult choice for us initially to choose between Flex and traditional classes because remote learning wasn't as structured as it could have been prior to the introduction of Flex. We feel strongly that we made the right decision and have continued with the program because of how successful she has been. Bryn has made many gains socially, academically, and with her time in management since starting the program. She has assigned several projects with the program and has spent a great deal of time writing, researching, working collaboratively within groups, and working presenting. She was a shy child prior to beginning the program, and we are incredibly pleased with her growth in public speaking, which has also helped her confidence. We have two older children who are currently in college and excelled while at Noble, so we can easily make their comparison that the curriculum is appropriate for Bryn. This program has been instrumental in Bryn's increased confidence and her growth with time management, as she is able to effectively work independently at home while having our support and her teacher's support when needed. The teachers are supportive, goal-oriented, and they motivate Bryn to produce work to her potential. Prior to the Flex program, Bryn would be absent from school between ten to fifteen days per year. Due to her medical conditions and the flexibility with the program, has alleviated our concerns that her absence would create gaps in her academic success since she's able to participate when only. The loss of the Flex program would be detrimental to these students and their families as it provides the flexibility needed for the students to be, some students to be successful. Thank you.
My name is Caspy Caston, and I am an Excel student in the fourth grade at Eric Allen School. For me, Excel has always been one of the only times of the week I really look forward to. In Excel, I am challenged, not just bored. Then Mrs. Haylian retired, and it turned everything upside down. After that, my Excel After that, my Excel schedule was shuffled, and I had very limited time in the Excel classroom. Suddenly, I didn't want to go to school. I dreaded it and felt so bored and angry, especially on Monday. I went from loving school to being miserable. Then my teachers stopped to my parents, and they arranged for me to spend a little extra art time on Monday with Ms. Johnson, the art teacher. It really affected everything, and I looked forward to it. It is exactly that type of individualized education that my parents are worried we could lose next year, and so am I. In 2024, we have been lucky enough to have Mr. Robert come out of retirement since he checks out. He is an amazing teacher and really made me excited about a wide range of subjects, from piermans to colonial America. I'm nearing the end of fourth grade, and it seems so strange to reflect back on the first three months of the year when I'm so bored and angry that I was begging my parents to switch me to homeschool. It took a team of Mr. Robert, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Ozman, Ms. Sahadian, Ms. Bowie, Ms. Kenneth, and Ms. Kennison to get me where I am this year. I am grateful to them and to all of you for me and all the students at my school with special education. Thank you.
My name is Kelly Faro, and I'm a long-term resident of Lebanon. My son's a fifth grader in the Flex program. So tonight, I want to address a subject that holds great importance in my and my child's life: Noble Flex. After a very difficult year filled with hardships and struggle, we were forced to homeschool. I spoke with Laheb and LaFrance, and we're looking to find the best program and support system for my child. After taking the time to really hear me out, she told me there was a program within MSAD-60 she thought would benefit us greatly. The way she talked about it and on paper, the program looked great. In reality, that doesn't even begin to do it justice. This is one of the best programs that I've come across in a public school setting. The teachers are amazing. They are the most enthusiastic, and they find ways to engage the children and teach them in ways that really get them thinking. This isn't just about being able to answer a question correctly on a test. It is teaching the students to be curious, to ask questions, and then to research and find answers. They are able to love for learning, and that will go with them to life. The kids work together cooperatively to solve problems and brainstorm. All of the kids participate. This has helped with socialization and cooperation, both in the in-person portion of the program as well as the homeschool portion. My child shares those come back out of his shell. He once again will talk on and on about something he has learned or a concept he read about. He asks to read things to me or show me things on the computer. He's excited about learning again. The teachers really go above and beyond. They deserve so much credit for the success of the program. They work with the kids and find the best ways to teach them and reach them. This program offered a curriculum as close to the Montessori as we could get in a public school setting. Both of my kids had formerly been educated in Montessori schools, but I would recommend this program to any of those families. It's a real bonus to the kids who attend. With guidance, they are able to choose age-appropriate work that they have a real passion for. They are challenged to go beyond the surface of learning. My child excels when he is pushed to work harder each time. He loves the fact that there are kids from fifth to eighth grade in the class, and the age difference is actually one of the selling points of the program. Younger kids can learn from the older ones, and the older ones can have the opportunity to share their knowledge and teach the younger ones. A win-win. I don't feel he would have the same experience in the regular schools. The students attend Flex for a myriad of reasons, such as anxiety, bullying, learning challenges, and yet they mix so well together, and they create a beautiful, safe space. Safety is just another reason the children here thrive. My child has certainly thrived here during this past school year. The benefits of Flex have been apparent to everyone in our lives. For me, I see huge improvements, and he is coming back into the happy, confident child I knew before. He will once again leave my side. Even if there was not such a huge benefit in his education, I would consider this the largest win of all. Without Noble Flex, I do not believe we would be where we are this year. I just need to say thank you, thank you, thank you to the district, the teachers, and the other children in Flex. Everyone has played a part in helping us. I do not know what we will do next year if this program is cut from the budget. I'm afraid to even consider it. There are so many non-traditional learners out there that could benefit from this program, just as my child has. Noble is on the forefront with offerings such as unique programming.
Time, thank you.
Thank you.
We are approaching our 30 minutes, so we are going to take these last people that want to speak, and will have input at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Hello, school board members, administrators, town residents, and district colleagues.
Murray, please.
Oh, I'm getting to it. Hold on, I was just addressing you guys, sorry. My name is Toni Neis, and my family and I have been in Berwick resident for almost 14 years. My husband and I have three sons, two who have graduated from Noble High School, and one who is currently in the eighth grade at Noble Flex. I work for MSAD-60, and this marks my sixth school year within the district. At the Norton School, I hold a distinctive consolidated role as both the librarian and the STEAM specialist for 223 students. Both roles demand substantial dedication and time allocation to fulfill their duties effectively. I have a great deal of administrative tasks that ensure the library is well-organized and functions properly. My non-instructional time is invaluable as I oversee the operations of two distinct classrooms, each involving a range of administrative duties. In the library, my responsibilities encompass creating lesson plans, managing book transactions, facilitating research for new acquisitions, organizing and processing books. Additionally, to ensure that the library runs smoothly, I issue and update library cards, oversee patron numbers, input data, and generate barcode labels. Moreover, librarians are tasked with ensuring they upkeep through repair books like cover ing, gluing, and relabeling. To help ensure that the library looks its best, I coordinate and execute the book fairs that help raise money to upgrade the library. Recently, the STEAM program came under scrutiny, and I want to highlight its significance for students. STEAM represents science, technology, engineering, art, and math. STEAM nurtures critical thinking and problem-solving skills crucial for children to task life's challenges. It also promotes teamwork, encouraging students to collaborate, share ideas, engage in discussions, support viewpoints, and reach conclusions collectively. Class time constraints often hinder teachers from incorporating science into their lessons fully, making STEAM valuable for covering science standards efficiently. STEAM occupations are expanding at 24%, surpassing all other occupations' growth rates, according to the U.S. Department of Commerce. So that indicates a promising future for STEM education. As a STEAM teacher, I am responsible for making technology fun and accessible, and to do that, I teach the kids how to use coding programs to code robots, which helps inspire them to pursue tomorrow's coding opportunities. Currently, I am teaching the children the science of plant root. Thirty seconds, sorry. Through hydroponics, which helps the vegetables grow faster, less consuming their attention. Through a brand, we are able to obtain a 3D laser printer that helps teach computer-added graphic designs. When I am not teaching STEAM, I have many administrative duties that entail pursuing brands, crafting lesson plans, exploring innovative teaching approaches.
Tell me where to go.
We're going to use four.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll have the public get ready. Oh, he was, I didn't watch.
That's okay. You tell me where to go. I don't want to miss money. And you're more content.
I'm Jeremy Caston. I'm a parent from Berwick. Something I have learned as a parent is that it is often best not to react to foolishness and outrageous behavior, but sometimes it is necessary to be firm and rein in that behavior. Tonight, I am here to speak for reining in foolishness. Over the past nine months that I've been watching, the school board dialogue and meetings has gotten so far out of whack, and the notions that we're entertaining are so foolish that the normal business of keeping our schools running has been sidelined. Over and over, I have watched a few assume that they are speaking for the many. By continually inserting this foolishness, they're chipping away bit by bit at what is working in our schools and the work of the board itself is death by a thousand budget cuts. You have all been invited to go into the schools. Please, go. No one is spending your money irrationally. They're trying to offer quality education to all of our students. In some cases, that may look very different from your school experience.
Madam Chair, we haven't addressed the board.
I apologize. Yes, of course, I'd be glad to. Just, I just said I would be glad to. No, won't pull out that to my time. And there may be unfamiliar terms like ed tech, behavioral interventionist, et cetera, and those are unfortunately the needs of our current student population. I would wager some of those complaining are grateful when they benefit someone in their family. This year alone, toilets are out of commission, septic's failed, boilers on their last legs. This is not a money grab, and honestly, as a two-full-time working parent household, I get it. We struggle every month, but this year Netflix, Hulu, Disney, they all went up a bunch in price, down in service, and somehow you are expected to make our schools perform better and better with less funding. It's foolishness. I'd rather have potholes on my road than watch our schools lose more good teachers. A comment I heard from a board member at one point was to me much too much, as it suggested that, quote, "The problem comes when we water all the flowers," meaning students. Our modern society demands with laws that everyone is watered and treated with respect, dignity, and met at their level. This prior notion is callous, dangerous, and frankly, illegal. It is not Noble School Board appropriate. Finally, I have also heard over and over board members mention constituents, referring to the town folk who elected them. This is both wrong and incorrect. To quote the Noble website, "The board is an independent body charged with setting the policies for the district that the board believes are best for the education of our district's children." Your oath is to the students of this school district, not to the folks that elected you. If someone wants to serve constituents, they should run for a political office. Please remember your job, end the foolishness, and propose a budget.
Thank you, Mr. Caston. The time is up. Thank you, Mr. Caston. The time is up.
Holly Dupree, Berwick. Good evening. Sincerely, thank you for your time. I'm getting a migraine, so my speech might get a little wonky. If you watched the video from 3:14 school board meeting, you will hear a school board member say at 46 minutes 50 seconds the following, and I quote, "Do we have our priorities right, or are we trying to water every plant in the garden? If you water every plant in the garden, you get problems." You will also hear one of our principals reply at 47 minutes 55 seconds, which was, and I quote, "I understand your analogy about, like, do we water every single plant, but I will not look at a parent and say, 'Your plant's not worth it.'" Each of you were given the Maine School Law and Practice Board Practice for Board Members Handbook. In that handbook, the Maine Supreme Court has described the authority of the school board as follows, and I quote, "The school board committee acts as a public board. It in no sense represents the town. Its members are chosen by voters of the town, but after election, they are public officers deriving their authority from the law and responsible to the state for the good faith and rectitude of their acts. So I ask you the same question. Do we have our priorities right? Please, remember, you have all taken oaths and are now here for our schools, our teachers, our students, our children. You are not here for your constituents who voted you in. I appreciate the difficult task you have to create a budget, but at the end of the day, when you create this budget, you must remember to create a budget for the students and their needs, which 100% means watering every single plant in this garden, and not because you want to raise or don't want to raise taxes for your constituents who voted you in." Thank you.
My name is Sarah Boucher. I'm from Lebanon. I'm an alumni of Noble. Our options over 30 years ago were the standard classroom experience and vocational school, and that was about it. And these experiences have changed over time based on learning that people learn in different ways. Our mission statement for the Noble School District is we empower all students to develop enthusiasm for learning, foster confidence through success and failures, provide service to others, and achieve their personal, social, and academic best, leading to fulfilling and engaging minds for all. My child is in the Noble Flex program, and this program embodies this vision. Yes, my child can learn in the general ed classroom, but he does not thrive there. He often feels invisible, and he feels overstimulated. Noble Flex offers students the opportunity for independent, quiet work times that teaches them about time management and prioritizing. They are learning skills about collaborating online and have the opportunity to interact in person. This has helped my child have enthusiasm for learning and to celebrate his successes. He does not see failure as failure, but as a learning opportunity. It has completely changed his outlook on education from something that is, in his words, "feels his imagination" when he was in the general ed. Not that there's anything wrong with it, it was just his feeling, to true learn. Noble Flex works in the community with the Ryan House, with Raising Mother for Ukraine, where the students coordinated a fundraiser, to poverty within our community, our state, and our world. Students are met where they are in their learning, and the coaches have the opportunity to individualize lessons and assignments in a meaningful way. This includes extra support with language arts for the same student who needs advanced lessons in math. Coaches are readily available to students in a different way than in the general education classroom. Just to kind of skip through, Noble Flex is helping these children thrive in a learning setting that works for them, helps them feel successful in their lives with peers and in the community. The embodiment of the Noble mission statement, which I read, and taking away this learning opportunity counteracts my year goals for our community of young learners. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amanda Kimball, and I'm a parent in Berwick. I have two children in the district, one in the elementary and one at the middle school. Both of my kids have a disability, and both have two different experiences in the school system. One is athletic and outgoing, the other is more shy and uncompetitive and into music. I think that's one of the best things about raising kids, is watching them grow into whoever they want to be and watch them do things they love. I told my daughter what some of the cuts were, and when I mentioned music, her eyes watered. I told her I'd come today and make sure our voices are heard. Who are we to take things away like opportunities? Looking through the list of budget cuts saddens me. You would be taking away my child's safety, my child's safe spaces. It's no secret the school is filled with a lot of bullying and harassing. It's shocking to think we feel we are in a position to take things away. The middle school experiences are not the same for all kids. My child looks forward to music and chorus and her amazing music teacher who she can connect with. She also got to attend the Honors Music Festival. What a confidence boost that was for her. It's where she can feel like herself again, and that doesn't always come easy. You take away our counselor, she loses her safe place. Someone she can talk to, and I can't be with her. Our IEP coordinator helps me make sure everything is in place for the hour-long IEP meetings that are usually emotionally draining on any parent. You take away Officer Fox, you take away my feeling of security. My child does not need an ed tech, but that doesn't mean I don't see and understand the value in having them. I wonder if that's why you feel you can't have these. It doesn't affect you, you don't feel this. I see them working hard in a job that has to be emotionally and physically draining. They are needed. What kids did we take into consideration? What kids in this district's joys and safe spaces and our children's safety hold no value to you? Please rethink your decisions. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tammy McLorn. I teach physical education in North Berwick. If you just look at our classroom, you'll see what appears to be free time in our schedule. I can assure you that every specialist in North Berwick has worked really hard to fill these times to provide support to our students and staff. Because we are a smaller school, our resources to meet the needs of our students are also less. Being out of these buildings two days a week will impact what we are aiming to offer North Berwick Elementary students. We are often asked to support struggling students, mentor and be a check-in person, and be an incentive for classes or individual students trying to meet academic and behavioral goals. Because we teach all of the students and are visible in our buildings every day now, these connections and relationships have already been built. As specialists, we use our knowledge and skills to provide early intervention to those needing additional help with fine and gross motor skills. We collaborate with classroom teachers and are a resource to them. We provide enrichment opportunities for students who have special interests that they would like to pursue. And we would provide support for social and emotional well-being of our students. We are encouraging you to please reconsider consolidating our jobs and keeping us in our North Berwick community, using our specialized skills as a resource to better accommodate the needs of our students. Thank you.
Carrie Smith, Burwick resident and North Berwick Elementary School art teacher. In the North Berwick Elementary School art studio, we learn more than colors, painting, and drawing. Rather, we emphasize how to be a well-rounded learner. We learn to collaborate, make cross-curricular connections, innovate and develop our personal interests and how to express them, all while learning how to be responsible for our school and the materials that we use. And North Berwick Elementary School art extends beyond producing results, emphasizing instead the artistic process, how to develop an idea through all of the successes and setbacks there. The skills my students develop are applicable to all classes of their lives within and out of school. Should the positions between North Berwick and L S be consolidated, students across the district will lose variety, to lose access to a variety of additional offerings, including but not limited to advanced art for third and fourth grade students, support for arts and I B students, Noble Flex will lose their art teacher, Noble Virtual Pathway students will lose their mentor, fourth grade students will lose the ability to work on a yearbook design and as a yearbook creator, lose the yearbook itself, fine motor interventions for a variety of kindergarten first grade students. I implore you to understand that these are the things that we do each and every day that make our students' days special. After all, isn't that what sessions are for? Thank you.
We will look at the minutes around a very quick meeting. And March seven? Any other comments? Motion to accept? Second? Second. All in favor?
I understand.
And March fourteen? Any comments? Corrections? Motion approved? All in favor? And next on the agenda is Noble Flex presentation.
Good evening, everybody. I want to thank you for allowing us to present about Noble Flex. So without further ado, I introduce to you Noble Flex, where learning takes a whole new dimension. Our program is a fusion of innovation, tradition, and it's designed to empower our students in grades five through eight through project-based learning. I want you to picture this. Three days a week, students embark on their educational journey from the comforts of their homes, engaging in hands-on projects and independent assignments tailored to their pace and style. But that's just the beginning. Twice a week, our students come together at our unique here where the magic truly happens. Here, they immerse themselves in collaborative learning, experiences that foster teamwork, community, and real-life connections. It's not just about the academics. It's about building relationships and developing essential skills. At Noble Flex, we understand that every student is unique, and that's why our learning coaches work so closely with our families in order to craft individualized plans that lead each student right where they are. With flexibility, engagement, and authenticity at its core, Noble Flex is shaping the future of education, one project at a time. My name is Amber O'Neil. I'm the director of Noble Flex and the social-emotional learning coach. I've had the opportunity to be a part of Noble Flex for two years now.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Abbott, and I am the E L A and Social Studies Learning Coach. I've been at the program for all three years.
And my name is Robert Kendall, and I'm a math and science learning coach. And this is my first year at Noble Flex. Project-based learning at PBL is like planting a seed, watching it grow into a beautiful tree. Instead of just memorizing facts from textbooks, students dive into real-world challenges. Just like planting a seed, PBL begins with questions or problems that students want to explore. Students then research, experiment, and collaborate with classmates, just like gardeners tend to do their plants. Students see how their studies relate to things happening outside of school, like seeing how a tree grows and interacts with its environment. They have the freedom to explore different solutions to the problems at hand, just as gardeners might try different methods to help their plants grow. At the end of the project, students present their findings, reflect on their journey, and what they have accomplished, just like reaping the fruits of their labors.
Through the vehicle of project-based learning, Noble Flex allows students to focus on building real-life skills while also immersing themselves in standard-based academics. The program offers flexibility, yes, but perhaps more importantly in this post-pandemic climate, it also puts a heavy emphasis on the social aspects of team-building, collaboration, and community connection. This slide outlines some of the most important values of the Noble Flex failing. It also provides a visual of some of the ways in which we have impacted and been impacted by our surrounding communities.
At Noble Flex, we learn math, science, reading, writing, social studies, computer programming, health, and more. Everything you do in every young school. Our learning is rooted in the main learning results and common core standards. Our curriculum aligns with the subject area scope and sequences of the district. We look at the five through eight learning standards and integrate them into our work in an authentic way.
And as you've heard, Noble Flex is not just about academics. As the employment landscape continues to evolve in this age of information, the skills that are most in demand are also evolving. And it is critical to our students and to our future that education addresses these changes. Noble Flex cultivates in students every skill from Forbes's list of most in-demand workforce skills, including critical thinking, digital literacy, leadership, and collaboration.
When we think about our goals and vision for Noble Flex, I think it's important to point out that since the pandemic, more students are school-avoidant, leaving families feeling hopeless, and schools unprepared with a solution. Students who miss eighteen or more days of school or ten percent of the school year are marked as constantly absent. To provide some stats for you, in 2019, sixteen point eight percent of Maine students met this definition. This spiked to thirty-one point five percent in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, the year when most schools resumed regular construction. In November, the rates in Maine for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year were released, showing a slight decrease to twenty-seven point three percent. In our middle school alone, we are averaging about twenty percent of our students who are constantly absent. The topic of school avoidance is a conversation that needs to be spoken about. It is unfortunate, but at this sustained elevated rate, this issue may have significant staying power, and re-engaging students is likely to become more challenging. And it's also going to require considerable resources. We want to be a resource. Let us be a resource, and let us help students find the joy in learning again. We have seen it work, and that is why our students and families, past, present, and future, are our why. We have heard from several of our parents and even past students speaking during this public input, but we would now like to take a few moments of your time to allow some of our current students to be able to speak and tell their why. I'd like too, while Ms. Moise, to come up and speak on behalf of her son for tonight.
Noble Flex plays a crucial role in our community, holding significant values for our family since its establishment. Our son is unique, not particularly sporty, but eager to learn with a compassionate heart. Known as our eternal optimist and peacemaker, he has a way of touching people's hearts. His appreciation for Noble Flex stems from various reasons, which I will highlight tonight. Firstly, he appreciates the flexibility of the hybrid schedule. Secondly, the inclusive atmosphere at Noble Flex, where students embrace each other's differences, creating an enriching learning environment. Lastly, his years at Noble Flex have shown him the joy of learning without disruptions, unlike in traditional schools where behavior issues often interrupt teaching. As a parent, it's tough to witness such struggles when you desire the best education for your child. As an educator, I understand and witnessed this frustration in my own classrooms. In a perfect world, I ideally wish for the opportunity for the Noble Flex to continue until graduation, providing a path to success for students who may face challenges in traditional settings. My husband and I extend our deepest gratitude to Amber O'Neil, Sarah Abbott, Rachel Putnam, who was there for two years as the math and science teacher, and Robert Kendall, who joined this year. My husband and I appreciate your dedication and support over the past three years. Your efforts have truly made a remarkable difference. You all are rock stars. So please consider, for future students and families, to keep this fantastic program running. Thank you.
Hello. Yes, so Noble Flex is quite good. And what I've noticed so far in my couple of years in it, we've had a higher likelihood towards charity events than regular schooling, such as the time that we raised some money for Ukraine, and then currently on how we're trying to raise awareness about hunger in the community. Some of the reasons that Noble Flex is better than regular school would be that, unlike with the way school normally is, I've been able to somewhat build emotional connections with other people in the class, which I wasn't going to be able to do before. And the unique way that the schedule works, where you have two days in person, really gives you more opportunities for, you know, stuff like how the assignments work better when you're at home, or how team-building exercises usually work better when you're near each other. And you also get a bit more help here than usual, from my experience. It's usually just use the work, deal with it. And yeah, I feel like my choices have a stronger effect in Noble Flex than they used to, a lot. And yeah. Before, I used to be apparently a lot less okay with being in school before Noble Flex, which was clearly so horrible that I have penta-pressed those memories. Yeah. And one of the reasons I felt that way was because my choices didn't really feel like they mattered a lot. Like, what's that word? You know, that thing in our country's past where women were trying to get the... All right, women's suffrage, yeah. You know, how they were trying to get the ability to vote, yeah. It's kind of like that. Yeah, that's not as much as I've got, so.
Lauren?
Hi, this is my third year in Noble Flex. I really love the group work and the people in the program. There are many, we are a close group and work well together. Noble Flex is a project-based learning program, and we seem to always be researching and presenting our work to our classes in the community. I used to really struggle with public speaking, and now I've become better at presenting because of it. Noble Flex is made up of multiple grade levels, and we all work together on projects and class assignments. There is no bullying in the program, and I've found that it's easy to make friends. I really like the flexibility in the hybrid program since I can prioritize my day based on the work that is assigned to me. Noble Flex is important. Noble Flex is important to each of us for different reasons, and I feel like the program needs continued support. I wouldn't be who I am without the support and flexibility that I have for the past three years.
Hi, everyone. I thank you for sparing me a few minutes of your time. My name is Charlie Gilmore, and I'm in the eighth grade. I'd like to preface this by saying that this is my first year at the Flex program, and it was the best decision of my life, even though it was only for this year. Last year, in the seventh grade, I was being relentlessly bullied. I had death threats by people I had once thought were my friends, and I was being sexually harassed. And as a result of this, my parents had to take me out of school, and I did my work online for the remainder of the year. In January of 2023, my seventh-grade teacher had recommended me the Flex program. After applying and being accepted into the program and spending this past school year in Noble Flex, I can't express how much I love it. I would like to bring up how kind and accepting everyone here is first. I feel so supported by my peers and learning coaches alike that this is the best community I've been a part of. Not only is this community supportive, but it's also very welcoming. As I said, this is my first year here, so I was naturally very awkward, but I fit right in, and I was also treated as the same way as if I would have spent years here. Another part of this program, which is my personal favorite, is our learning coaches. They're the best teachers I could ask for. They support me and constantly check in on me. They also have direct contact with my parents to support me in the best way they can. And they also, with our lessons, they make sure that everything we do is fun and engaging, so that everything we do is just, like, I don't know what the word is. Just so we don't get bored in class, because that's one of the most important things, in my opinion, is being engaged with the lesson. Lastly, and the reason all of us are here, is to express why Noble Flex should keep its funding. Like most of us, we each have our own reasons. But here are some key thoughts that I thought should be pointed out. For one, every one of my peers had only positive thoughts to say about the program and say that it's been the best schooling option for them. Some, including me, have felt like it has saved them. I'd also like to bring up that there are very good reasons why we're in the program in the first place. If we would go back to public school, then it would have effectively meant all for nothing. All in all, I'd like to thank you for your time and hope you take all of our letters into consideration.
Last but not least, we have my neighbor.
Hello, everyone. My name is Megan Dumas, and I'm in the eighth-grade program at Noble Flex. I'm not one to exaggerate, but this program saved my life. I was at an all-time low in my life due to mental health and life just running its course. My school life was making it even worse. The literal abuse I was suffering at the hands of people at the school I was supposed to be safe at was sick. From social media posts and things that should never be said by anybody, ejected at me from insecure losers, eating your lunch alone in the middle of a crowded cafeteria while everyone stares at you is another kind of humiliation. Pictures being taken of you behind or from the side and ending up on Instagram, Snapchat, or God knows where else makes you want to scream until class shatters. Insulting names, encouragement to end my life, giggles while walking past, and so many more things were things that I had gotten used to at Noble Little School. It eventually got so bad that every single night I begged my parents to stay home crying. My mother eventually got so fed up with this that she pulled me out in the middle of the school year and enrolled me in Noble Flex. I was extremely scared that this would be a terrible repeat, but I was pleasantly surprised to find out that everyone in this program got involved like disciples. I rarely heard an unkind word from anyone's mouth, and I immediately felt safe and welcomed. The three teachers who were learning coaches were and still are very supportive and caring about my choices and how I was feeling. They made me feel as though I was valid and my opinions mattered. If I asked for help, I can guarantee that at least one of them will be there and make sure that I understand it with a smile on their face. While I am at Noble Flex, I know that I will be heard and supported by at least three people, three teachers making a difference in the world, or at least in my world. I've also been given so many opportunities that I would never be given at a normal school, such as taking hikes, volunteering at the community, book groups at the library, and so much more. I don't know where I would be without Noble Flex, and I would absolutely hate to see it go. I sincerely hope that my words have at least made a small difference in the opinion, and I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
I want to thank each and every one of you for listening to us and allowing us to share our story of Noble Flex. I have packets for each of the board members on the front. There are some QR codes for you to be able to see our work, as well as our Facebook page, which provides so many videos and pictures of things that we're doing, and our website, of course. I also want to invite you to please come to our Yer, experience it firsthand with our students, and I also welcome any questions as well. In this packet, there are also several letters from community members, educators, families, and prior students advocating for Noble Flex. So I hope I will also take the time to read them, because they unfortunately could not be here tonight, but I felt it was important that they were just heard. Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. Next is employment.
Okay, we just have a few. Okay, we just have a few employment updates to go over this evening. Oh, and we have motion. The first is a lot of that, and she's going to be resigning from the high school at the end of this school year. We'll receive this resignation letter now, so we get a motion. And second, a vote. Motion.
Second.
Seconded.
Yeah, she did.
Thank you. The next one is Audrey Williams, and she's at Noble Middle School. And that resignation is effective before the end of the school year.
Motion. Second. All right.
And the last one is Christian Allison, our special education director, and her resignation is in effect for June thirtieth, 2024.
Second.
All right, and that's it for that.
Any monthly celebrations?
Celebrations we want to share? There's so much, right?
My favorite, how does the one actually go?
It's this weekend, it's supposed to be this weekend, so we have to.
And then any follow-up, the chat, events that are coming up on that?
We haven't, yeah, Aaron's in the audience.
What happened?
Hi, I'm Mary Moore, the athletic director here at the high school. We recently had, geez, a few came to a school board meeting a couple of weeks ago. We shared all of our celebrations that we had with our winter sports programs. Excuse me. We've had, wow, a very successful year so far. Specifically, this winter, we had our first girls wrestling state championship, first girls New England state championship. For New England championship, rounder was basketball, made it to the regional final. We had indoor track athletes that were state champions, New England champions. The list goes on and on. However, we had a few track athletes that went to nationals. We had Maddie Jordan, who placed fifteenth out of a field that might be twenty-five in the nation in the eight hundred meters, so fifteenth in the nation is pretty good. He will be moving on to the University of Rhode Island, which is a Division One facility, so he will be running track and field across country there. We had our sprint men's relay team that finished on the back end of the pack. However, being a nationals again is a pretty good accomplishment. We had Ryan Moore, who was a race walker, who finished right kind of in the middle of the pack. So again, nationals, pretty major accomplishment. Yeah, a kudos to all the coaches, the athletes, the parents that help out with all of our programs. We couldn't do it without the parents, the booster groups that we have, the parents that drive their kids to and from practices and games. We have sixty athletic programs between the middle school and high school. We've got over a hundred coaches and volunteers that volunteer their time, more time than sometimes necessary, helping kids just outside of sports with their life and growing young men and women to go into the real world. So a testament to everyone else at our programs, and thank you to our school board for supporting us in everything that we do. So, thank you.
Just one more quick thing, the district art show is the twenty-second. So that's coming right up. It's the first time in a few years. So that is here from the high school.
Thank you. And before we adjourn, we did say we'll be doing our public input, but we do need to alter the agenda for that, so we have a motion for like fifteen-minute public input?
Seven.
Mayor? Anyone for public input?
I'll send it out. Okay, I was waiting for you. Okay. All right. My name is Leanne Wurts, and I am Berwick resident. I have two children that attend the schools, and I teach in Berwick. I've decided to speak tonight to give my thoughts from the front line on some of the possible cuts that have been brought to the table. I will begin with our assistant principal position. Our assistant principal plays a vital role in our school. Not only does she directly support our principal, but she also supports all of the staff and students. She is the person who primarily takes care of the discipline issues and also ensures positive implementation of PBIS at our school. Our assistant principal works hard to create a positive community and increase the morale. If any changes should be made, it should be making our assistant principal full-time, not just a half-time position. And on a side note, she actually works three-fifths of the week, not half. Her absence is definitely felt on the two days that she is not present. If we lose our assistant principal, everything she does will fall into place of the employees, which is unrealistic. I am asking you, please do not cut the assistant principal position from the budget. Next, I will talk about our math coaches. I have had the opportunity to work directly with our math coaches for the last three years. I have to say that we are very lucky to have the two math coaches in our district that are very knowledgeable and dependable. Our coaches do so much for our school communities. They give teachers support. They set up coaching cycles, which is particularly helpful to new teachers as well as seasoned teachers. They provide PD during PLC time. They have helped to make sure there is consistency with assessments and have done work with the report card. They have led book groups and webinars for teachers in the district. They are even building math awareness with families by creating monthly videos to share. I cannot imagine not having access to my math coach. I am asking you, please do not cut our math coaches from the budget. In regards to consolidating specialists, this choice will impact two entire school communities. It is important our schools have consistency, and having specialists at different schools will disrupt that consistency. On paper, it might look like some of our specialists have lots of free time. However, they don't have as much time as the paper reflects. Our specialists work closely with our school's mentorship program that pairs students with adults who need extra support and connections. The time they spend together is vital to our student's success. Having the specialists in our school every day of the week allows teachers to collaborate and integrate their curriculum. I am asking you, please do not consolidate specialists because it will directly impact multiple school communities. I have other topics that I am passionate about keeping in the budget, and I will quickly mention those before I run out of time. By the way, these are all positions that directly impact our students. Keep PBIS, keep the SRO officers, keep the social workers, keep our STEAM special. If you're, please keep anything that will directly and positively impact our students. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Jean. I'm from North Berwick. I've lived here for over twenty years. I'm here because of the Facebook post. I'm just curious of all the school board members, if you approve that post, because it seems you're single enough with some of your board members, and I feel you're making a divide. Also in there was it stated, majority of the community members who show up to the school board meetings who don't currently have children in MSAD sixty. That means families who currently have children in MSAD sixty are not using their voices at the school board public input sessions. To me, it sounds like we're being blamed because we're showing up. I did have two children that attended the school. Two of them, both of them were belated. Nothing was done about it. We want to know where our tax dollars are going. And I know it's hard for parents to make to the school board meetings. They're seven, seven-thirty at night. Some are single parents, some have parents working during the day, some at night. So who's going to be home with the children? I have grandchildren who are going to be approaching age, school age, where they'll be attending our school district, and I want it to be a safe, fun, learning experience for them. My last note is, the very last line in the Facebook post, it said, "We can't allow the minority to speak for the majority." I'm sorry, we are now waking up. We know what's going on. We all have voices, and we all have something special to offer. And it's time to recognize this instead of tearing each other down for our differences. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Pearson, and I'm a Berwick resident with a son who's currently in fourth grade. I'm here tonight to share my concerns with the proposed cuts to various programming for next year. I do not work in the Noble District, but I have been a classroom teacher for twenty-four years now, and I do understand that cuts are never made lightly. But I'm alarmed at the rationale discussed at the last meeting for many of them. Every day, our educators are asked to meet the needs of the whole child, juggling social, emotional learning, mental health challenges, behavior challenges, poverty, addiction, and on and on, all while doing their very best to educate each unique student. Cutting specialist staff and programs will make us even more challenging. Impacting classroom teachers, because it only adds a few kids to each class, may seem logical on paper, but a few kids can make a huge difference in the ability for teachers to be effective in meeting the wide array of needs of our learners. Cutting ed tech may seem great in theory if you look at just numbers, but when you look at what students need in their IUPs, overloading ed tech just makes for a impossible situation. Proposing to combine specials between buildings seems like a creative solution, but when you look at the rich programming and total number of students those staff members have to effectively juggle, not to mention the different cultures in each building, you are encouraging high teacher burnout, watered-down programming, and the destruction of so many of our clubs that those specialists offer to our students. My son, who absolutely adores his regular classroom teacher, always talks about his specials first when sharing about his day because those programs are a vital part of a well-rounded education. Being able to participate in after-school clubs this year has helped him thrive in a way very differently from what his sports teams offer. Every teacher who works with each student plays a role in helping our kids become well-rounded thinkers and people. They may be considered specials, but they are just as essential. At the last meeting, I heard a community member, who's also a teacher in the district, invite school committee members to visit the schools, get into the classroom and speak with the teachers, and I would encourage you all to consider doing that. I'd also encourage both district and building admin to get back into the classrooms, not just for observations, but to actually experience what life is like daily for all of the hard-working staff and our students. Cutting educational staff and programs is not the answer our students need. Please find other solutions to the budget challenges that will not negatively impact our students. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Mark Rulod from North Berwick. First of all, I want to say congratulations to the students that stood up and took a lot of courage. They did a very good job. I would thank them. I also want to thank the teachers that helped. I also want to thank the teachers that helped and pushed these students. You know, we're not against the teachers. We want teachers to have more money, and I know a lot of your teachers here this evening. And what we want to see is cut on the budget. Tonight, get rid of the woke ideology, get back to the curriculum. I hold for US patents working on my fifth. I got trademarks, I got five full licenses, state licenses in the water field. You know, when we talk about climate change, science, NASA just found that Titan, it's got more petroleum on Titan than the Earth does. Well, we sit there going, how the hell is that happen? How did dinosaurs get there? Well, they realized that oil is now is a natural resource that keeps going, we never run out of. It's part of the Earth, the way the Earth breathes like we do. Carbon is not our enemy, it is not, it's what we breathe. Why were the dinosaurs so big? Because it was so much carbon.
Excuse me?
Okay, I'm going. Yes, I am. So tonight, if you ask most kids, what does democracy mean, most of them get it wrong. It means from the rulers up, down. Republic means from the rule down, up means people have a voice. And tonight, you said that you're a Democrat. In other words, these parents don't, there's no transparency, the parents have no say. They pay for your, they pay for your, they pay for your, your, your pay. And they have to have a say. Those are their children, not yours, okay? I just want to say, we don't want to take away academic activity, but there's a real problem right now. Every 90 days, we're tacking on a trillion dollars to our deficit, and before you know it's going to be every 100 days. We are on a runaway train that is going to crash soon. There's a lot of people I met that can't meet their budgets to buy food, feed their family. They have to close up the doors in their house to heat a one-room house so they can survive, have a hard time making the taxes. We don't have to cut, we can cut the H-Back system, that's $8 million to cut off your budget. The resource officer in Lebanon, that's almost $200, $200,000 off your budget. You know, there's ways the same in the budget, we're also sacrificing the children, and that's something we need to look at. Thank you.
Excuse me, we do have some people that haven't had a chance to speak. Is it possible with the last couple of minutes, could we turn that time over to them?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for all your input, but we do have some other people that want to speak.
Okay, can I go after them and finish?
If you're not able to speak tonight and you'd like to submit a written document, I am happy to put those in minutes too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Daniel Hook. I am a parent of two young children from Berwick. My daughter is a first grader at Hussey and my son will be starting there come fall. When my daughter comes home from school, what she talks about is her specials and principally what, what she talks about is STEAM and the activities that she gets to do in that class. And as a professional, STEAM is the class that would have better prepared me for my job and workforce because every day I use both art and science to communicate business metrics, projects, goals. So in the coming business climate, I believe that STEAM is among the best type of class that could prepare our kids for the future. I also believe that it's important to continue providing our children with both art and science learning opportunities in a world that continually needs, you know, logical thinkers that communicate in a variety of different ways, be that art, music, performance, sculpture. The world continues to need those that communicate abstract and science-based thoughts and ideas in ways that are communicated, that communicate more than just the rigid word or the abstract science math equations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hey, the firing power. I will talk to you a little bit about a couple of failures. The first one to start with is myself, I was a graduate of this high school. I feel like this school failed me, right? There was no hands-on opportunities like you guys have now for these kids and it sounds like we're talking about cutting. I think that's a huge mistake. We have a workforce out there that does not have enough skilled labor in it and we're talking about removing some of those opportunities for these kids to get the education that they need. Second, I think this is the laziest, sorry, this is a lazy failure in what we're going to cut. We're talking about cutting some of the lowest salaries in this district. Now, last check, it was over 20 people making six figures in this district and we're talking about cutting people like my wife, who makes 25% of what our top earners make in this district. These are the people who are on the front lines, who are trying to help these kids who need the extra help. And they need it.
Can you just bring up one handsome student?
My name is Ken Duck. He lives here in Brown, from Dutch Alabadi. What I have here is a job shadow application. And this young fellow, I'm pleased to say, he's a freshman here at this school, he's showing excellent progress, he's enthusiastic, we really need more autotext. And I'm so glad that he comes to me because he's showing a great amount of progress in which is actually exceeds more than what I thought for my first met with him. But the thing that he keeps asking me, when are my textbooks going to be coming in? He needs assistance from you folks and this is the third time that we've tried to make this aware, Mr. Dufoire told me they'd be coming soon. That was about three, maybe five weeks ago, something like that. He'd also like maybe even pair of safety glasses because I know that the people in Santa Tech, they get supplied with stuff, why can't these students here at this school, at my place or in your own place, whether job shadowing and they're working and they're training? He needs that and I feel it's really letting him down. And I'd like to tell him that you promised me here tonight he's going to get at least books because cars today are tough to work on, he needs that latest technology, okay? And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second? All the papers? And we identified in the break people we started a budget board session.